So I have as seven o'clock, I'd like to convene this meeting of the Wakefield Planning Board. I'm aware that Kristen Weekly is not going to be in attendance, so we can take roll call though. Uh, Bill Spaulding?
Here.
Kevin York?
Here.
Theo Noel?
Here.
And myself uh here as well. So we've got four of the five members. Uh, with that being said, move on to item number two, the approval of the meeting minutes from November twenty fifth. Do any members of the planning board have anything they'd like to comment on regarding that? Series of minutes as presented? Do I hear a motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Theo, roll call though. Kevin?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
Okay, and myself, yes as well. So motion passes for nothing. Uh, so in that case, moving on to item number three. Continuation of the public hearing associated with one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street subdivision. Uh, Attorney McGreal, before you you start, um, just for other members of the board, we did. Execute a extension of time associated with this project uh to. January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, and that was recorded today. At the town clerk and Attorney McGreal issued it to myself as well for the board's reference in cases any uh. Any need to have additional um. Time for whatever reason, uh, that also uh did occur. So, moving on, uh, Attorney McGreal, I'll turn it over to you to uh to conduct, start the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Attorney Brian McGreal, representing the applicants on this matter. Uh, with me tonight is Rich Williams, um, from Williamson's Parages, as you know, he's our uh site civil uh engineer. Um, we, um, as you know, last week I submitted a revised subdivision plan. Um, in what we did in that is uh promised, we incorporated the landscaping plans, the the last. And uh final version of the landscaping plan is part of the subdivision plan set. Um, that is now part of that, and I also sent you a separate copy of the landscaping plans just for your file, but now they're actually part of the. Uh, definitive plan uh set. Um, as we had discussed and you requested, I also submitted a draft uh decision. Uh, for the board's consideration, um, our desire is um. To have this matter closed tonight and a and um a vote taken, uh, hopefully for approval. Um, in that we satisfied all of the requirements. Um, if I could share, uh, Mr. Chair, the um draft decision?
I believe you can share now.
Second, here we go. And this is the draft decision, it just references, I'm sure you probably had a chance to look at, it's pretty basic, it just references really the history of this, the filing. Um, what was filed, um, it also references the hearing date and um when you're going to close the hearing. Uh, and vote, references a vote, and then also it cites, you know, the original plan that was re- that was filed was goes back to July of two thousand twenty-four. And now the final would be the revision date of December fifth, two thousand twenty-five of all the planned sheets. Including the landscaping plans, which would now be sheet eleven and twelve. It references the waivers that we've gone over, um. But um, uh, that are on the plan. Um, and and then it gets into the conditions and just to refresh the boys' memory, we did go with go through these uh conditions. Uh, in detail at the last meeting, there were some, I I cleaned this up um from a couple of perspectives. Um, the first thing I did is um. I just, I clarified this because we referenced this in the in the draft as operation and maintenance plan. But in the Williamson's Parages Stormwater Report, they're actually referred to specifically as a long-term operation maintenance plan. In a long-term pollution protection plan. So those are, those are how that's, so there wouldn't be any confusion, people say gee, what's the O N M plan mean? So that was, that was cleaned up, uh, and then um also. This condition um. Four was was originally three D, but I thought it warranted to make it its own number. Um, so now, you know, that was D before, so you might take note that before there were twenty-two, now there's twenty-three. Um, it just fit in better, it really didn't fit in well where I had it. Um, and then um. On condition number eight, which is now nine, there was contract, there was conflicting language here, the I N I fee. With the subject subdivision needs to be uh paid prior to the endorsement of the My Law Plan. We had had language down here below that referenced that it would be paid prior to the uh issuance of a building permit. Which really didn't make any sense because up above it's got to be prior to the actual uh endorsement of the My Law Plan. So that was deleted and taken out. Um, on uh number twelve, which is now thirteen, uh, Mr. Spaulding specifically requested this is, this is access to. Uh, the property. And Bill, you had asked that we take out the language that said until the board has completely released the surety and you wanted this to um to go on in perpetuity, which we were fine with. So that was taken out. Um, and then um. On condition number seventeen, which is now eighteen, I think, uh, Kevin York, you asked us to confirm. That uh chapter one fifty-four, uh, section six is the is the correct noise uh by law, and it is. Uh, I did confirm that. So this is kind of like a rehash of what we did at the last meeting. Um, we're happy to answer any questions that the board had uh has. Um, I've tried to be as efficient as possible with this, I think it's 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 um, we've addressed all of the uh concerns and issues. Um, of the uh board and we're respectfully requesting a vote of approval tonight. Um, and um, we anticipate being at the zoning board tomorrow night and uh and hopefully obtaining an approval from them as well. Uh, we've also uh worked diligently um with our neighbors on Nablos Way. I spoke with Attorney Geeny today, he might be on possibly on the Zoom. But um, we've addressed their concerns with some extra lining on the wall and our landscaping plan. And now subdivision plan reflects the added landscaping uh that they have requested um. Um, on uh, uh, near unit eight where the attached dwelling complex is going to be. So with that said, Mr. Chair, we're happy to answer any questions that the the board might have.
Thank you for that. Uh, I'll open up to any members of the board who would like to speak.
And I'm happy to share whatever anybody needs, if if anything.
Mr. Spaulding?
Yeah, thank you for updating us, Attorney McGreal. I don't have any further questions, I think it's. Pretty complete, I don't see um any other points of discussion that I have, so thanks.
Theo?
Yeah, I I would agree, I I I cross-referenced this against the the draft decision that um, the conditions that we had last time and. Um, like, yeah, I would confirm all the, all the changes as noted, and I thought it was helpful um, uh, to go through it again. Um, as sort of an an open item uh or open request, I um. I'll, I'll take any uh constructive thoughts about uh. The overall process, in particular, like um any fine points of the way we wrote our subdivision rules and regulations, um, just as a. Uh, to continue, um, you know, we'll take any feedback to make sure those remain um as clear as possible, but. Uh, and that's sort of an open request to um. The applicant, uh, other members of the public that are that are here and um the the rest of the board certainly. Um, and you know, can be sort of an an open item for future discussion as well.
Uh, Kevin, any, anything else from uh from you?
Uh, no questions, I'll just say um, thank you to Attorney McGreal, Rich Williams and uh the applicant's team. For what seemed to be a pretty transparent and collaborative process throughout this of working with the board. Uh, also Z B A Conservation Committee and um the uh Butters on Nablos Way, I think um. Coming out of this, it's a, it's a pretty good plan that. Seems to have taken into consideration the feedback and the concerns from all those groups, so thank you for for all of that work.
Uh, so using my prerogative, going last on the, from the board side, I would echo a lot of the the previous comments, uh, this. Was a long project, but I think hopefully it was uh due to. The fact there's all those concurrent reviews instead of anything that we got in the way of, but um, I want to thank the applicant and. At all the different parties who helped put this together, um, for from my perspective, uh, being a good partner in terms of creating of the best possible projects.
Thank you, thank you, the board and our neighbors, um, they um, you know, the insight that they gave, I think made it a better project, the folks on Nablos Way with their expert had a lot of good input. On this and um, it was a very cooperative uh process with them, we appreciate them.
Uh, so with that being said, um, I would like to open it up to any. Members of the public who wish to write any comments related to to the project before I anticipate that we take a vote as a board. If you are a member of the public and you wish to speak, feel free to raise your hand and then turn on your camera if able. And before giving any public comment, please make sure you state your name and your address. Okay, uh, not seeing any, I I will turn it over and um. So. The. I try, I apologize, I'm just pausing, trying to think of the best way to 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 word this motion, it would be a motion to um. Utilize the draft decision language issued by the applicant for the one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street subdivision. Uh, and reference. The. I'm trying to think, Bill, can you help me on this? I'm trying to think of how how would you actually craft the motion to accept this?
I think, uh, sorry, I was just looking at the landscape plan, just as another quick one, um. I think the motion just needs to accept the definitive plan. With the date and the information, um, usually.
The decision's written after the fact?
It would be the address, but I I don't think the decision has to be separate, I think the definitive plan. Um, will include the decisions in this document, so if we're accepting. Um, or making a motion to accept the definitive plan for one fifty-four and one fifty-eight Salem Street. Wakefield, Mass with the. Date and documents, Attorney McGreal, I don't think we need to make a separate one for the. Um, other documents, do we?
No, I I I would respectfully suggest, you know, having been through this a number of times in.
Yeah.
Various cities and towns is your, your, your motion would in essence be what your vote is in the draft decision.
Mm-hmm.
The board, you know, first of all, to close the public hearing would be one vote. Um, and then the subsequent vote, uh, after closing the public hearing would vote to approve the subdivision plan, definitive plan, subject to the conditions. Because you want the conditions to be binding. Is stated in therein in the plan and in the decision with the benefit of the waivers that we've requested. Um, from the requirements of subdivision control on in the in the plans are referenced in the draft decision.
Okay.
So.
So I think, I think, hope, thank you for the guidance, so in that case, let's start by um. For the planning board, I'd like to take, oh, Mr. Spaulding?
Yeah, one question, uh, this, this is why I was looking back at the set of drawings, um. And I know, um. There's just one question about the updated landscape, um. It looks like they're in. So sheet twelve, eleven and twelve are part of the set. But forgive me if I'm missing it, on the plan set index, it doesn't show sheet eleven and twelve as part of the. Sheet index.
Oh, I'm, yeah, let me share the plan, I I see what you're saying, I'm going to share it if I can, it's just falling to show.
Just want to make sure we're looking at the most updated and.
Yeah.
That whole complete package.
I think what you're referring to is on the index here, it doesn't reference sheet. Eleven and twelve.
Correct.
Yeah, yep, that's a point well taken, Rich, we can fix that for the My Law, correct?
Yeah, I'll take care of that tomorrow, that's a good point.
Yep.
I know, because it it is correct on the sheet one of on the.
Yeah, we changed that, but didn't add them, you're correct.
Yeah, it's spot on. Yep.
And I did recie- I I read through the notes too, the the um general notes and everything, look, I mean, they're. They seem right on, but if you do notice any references to sheet eleven or twelve. Um, I didn't pick that up, so I can't remember if there was anything in there regarding.
There was not. There are no notes that refer to that, that was, we added those at the end, so there won't be, there won't be that, but. Um, yeah, we will have to fix that first sheet, I appreciate it.
So in in context to the the motion, um, it should reflect also. Update to the drawing index to add sheet eleven and twelve. It's added to the set, I think it just needs to be added to the drawing index, and because it is a change. And we want to re- uh, vote on this this evening, I would like to, um. Yeah. Make sure that's noted in the motion. Attorney McGreal, do you think that's the right way to do it?
Oh, yeah, I think it's fine, I think it's a good pickup, spot on, yep.
Okay.
So I I'd like to do, prior to to crafting that, I'd like to close the public meeting and then we can proceed into the vote.
If I could just add one thing, Mr. Chair, you know, I I assume that when you vote, that, you know, I've given the draft decision, which is, you know, I would. Anticipate I will, you know, clean this up with the town planner for your signature. Um, so you know, part of your vote would be to authorize you to sign this decision on behalf of the board as a chair.
Yep.
Um, when that's done, and one of the things I want to include is, I want to include. You know, sometimes it's not done, but I think it should include the property addresses in the uh, you know, map and parcels that are involved, just just for the record when it gets recorded.
I'm sorry, you mean the motion, correct?
Um, I just think the decision, you know, I I put it in there and and I think it should be in there, just so you know, when people look at this, you know, in the future, they. They know what property addresses were involved, it's pretty.
I think it is in the top, it's in the top line.
It is, but I think it, you know, should reference the assessors' map and parcels.
Oh, okay, okay.
Just to, you know, which I can work with Marissa to clean this up for the chair's signature. When he's ready.
So, in that case, uh, I'd like to, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing associated with the one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street subdivision?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Bill, seconded by Kevin, roll call vote, Theo?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And yes to myself, so, public meeting is now closed by a four to zero vote. So then in that case, do I hear a motion to approve the referenced. One fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street plan, subject to the conditions stated therein and at this. And in this decision, with the benefit of the waivers listed on the plan and delineated in the draft decision. From the requirements of the subdivision, rules and regulations of the town of Wakefield. So long as the plans are amended as discussed at this meeting. And in addition, authorize the chair of the planning board to execute the decision on behalf of the board.
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, roll call vote, Kevin?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes as well, so.
Just a quick note, I want to make sure that Susan had a chance to, I know this is being recorded, but. If you had any questions on the wording in the motion.
I'll get it from Jim.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
So in that case, thank you everyone for the uh for the time, uh, anything else on? Item number three, one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street subdivision prior to me closing this item.
Thank you for the boys' hard work on this, very much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you guys, very much, appreciate it.
Good luck tomorrow night. Oh, I'm just taking a. A couple notes, just so I can send Susan the right motion.
I have the closed caption on, so. I wonder if you can pull it from that? Yeah, there's a full transcript, if you have closed caption on, it will grab the transcript.
Okay, so, uh, uh, that will, so that item number, number three is closed. Moving on to item number four, housing production plan. So I asked uh that we have the item number four and item number five, which are in some respects uh tied together. To discuss, I know we had a number of conversations related to. Changes that we want to potentially start undertaking to the zoning maps and or zoning. Um, zoning bylaw on the basis of the number of planning processes that have occurred uh over the the. The past couple of years and are more or less wrapping up. Wakeville twenty thirty, a year or two ago, the housing production plan this year, and then the master plan anticipated. I'm sure Marissa will give us an update, but TBD Q one of next year. So with that being said, and with the bylaw reclassification successfully having occurred um this fall, so. I I wanted to ha- start having a conversation with the board on, not even the substance of some of these conversations, but. How do we want to potentially approach these two, these two efforts? And so the first one being the housing production plan, I've gone through and done an audit and taken a look at. Some of the the things from the housing production plan that that were recommended to to the board. And whether that be adoption of a form-based code, enableage of cottage courts and townhouses. Form-based underlot or underlay for undersized lots, adaptive reuse. Language or dimensional um use table adjustments or hammerhead mid-block developments. Uh, all these types of things, right, so. I I don't know how much the other members of the board have gone through and looked at the housing production plan, but I wanted to kind of understand. Overall, if there was an appetite to do some of those. I'll say non-map type of proposed zoning amendment changes. Separately, or if we should just try to wrap all of this into a comprehensive. Have, you know, rezoning effort and kind of make it one large effort, I know we've, there's been kind of. Different conversations and and I'm not sitting here putting the thumb on the scale of either one, I really want to just have us. Talk about it as a group, um, given the fact that uh either one, I'm sure will engender a lot of conversation uh amongst townsfolk. Bill?
Yeah, I, I really feel, I, Jim, thanks for this quick introduction as far as pulling this together, I. I've felt since looking at the drafts and then having it all come together. I really feel like a focus somehow on seven and nine, meaning um. The expand age-friendly and accessible housing options, and it's uh really focusing on the age-friendly. And how we can maybe focus on that aspect of it to figure out how to help the senior-oriented development. And nine, and somehow promote affordable housing, because we all know it's such a difficult thing. And I know the ADUs do help, the smart growth, MBTA communities, we have a lot going on, but I I really think uh. Those two efforts speak to me more than the others. So, th- that's just how I feel about it, but I'm I'm open to.
And sorry, can you repeat, what were the two, two ones that you said?
Seven and nine.
Seven and nine.
Yeah.
So if you bear with me for a second, with the board, I'm going to share. So for reference, this is the housing production plan that I've got, have a copy of. And I highlight in yellow the ones that we had talked to the consultant about that are. At least theoretically actionable by the planning board.
So those aren't the same numbers from that.
Oh, wait, do I have the wrong?
No, 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 you don't have the wrong, but that's the actual, I'm reading from the Wakefield, the productive plan takeaways that you. Were sharing, that you sent with us? Sorry.
Well, yes, uh, okay, bear with me.
Right, so taking away that whole, like, how do we help? Uh, senior housing, senior-oriented housing and um. Affordable housing, more included, like with overlay tools, so those those two things, sorry.
This, well, these two, they, I'm highlighting right now.
Yes, yeah, okay.
So, um, I I very much agree with Bill and uh, this dovetails, um, because I. Like senior housing, um, and certainly housing that's, I I think more responsive. To the um, the demand uh that folks have, um, and that. The desire to downsize a little bit to something that is sort of um, and something that's closer to town. Um, in a way, um, but also, you know, that uh. That was a big talking point uh during all of the MBTA uh zoning conversations. And I think it also gives us an opportunity to to really start to um. Talk about how properties in the MBTA's uh corridors. Um, could be re- reused um to help meet this demand, so I um, I. I had been thinking about it in a way of, all right, what's the next step with? The zoning overlay that we passed in the spring, you know, which would be to try to figure out how to. Uh, encourage some more accessible service enriched uh in age-restricted housing. Um, specifically in the, in those areas.
With with regards to to those two goals. Are. In terms of the things that the planning board can do from a, from an underlying zoning perspective, are your thoughts that? Because I'm trying to remember, I think we have a senior, like a fifty-five plus overlay on the books already, right?
Yeah, but that's, that's just for uh Brightview.
So you're thinking, you're thinking like a basically taking the Brightview, almost like taking the Brightview um. Overlay and expanding it in geographic scope.
I, I don't know, I don't know, um, uh. I had actually thought a little bit more of what would service-enriched uh age-restricted housing. Uh, look like in the MBTA corridors, so um. Um, I think that gets a little bit more about. Uh, form and code uh within, within those areas. So, um, I wo- wouldn't be like necessarily expanding the the fifty-five plus uh overlay.
I have to agree with that thought too, and Theo and I didn't even coordinate this before the meeting, but. Thinking about, like, what can our board accomplish? I think some of the opportunities or the solutions are already within the housing production plan. Meaning, how do we have that cottage court-type feel or, I don't know, there's some words that. Throw out a stigma, but like, how does a row house effect help? With, instead of having, you know, brick house, brick house, brick house, subdivision, senior living looking. How do we for um. In an architectural way, create a smaller community within, and I, I can't, I know it's a little further out. But I can't help but think of the Butler Ave property that the town owns. That we did a seventeen or eighteen subdivision with multi-million dollar homes on it, that now. Because that didn't work out and. The town owns the land, if you're not familiar with it, back about, I want to say, maybe eight. Or ten years ago, w- we went, it was like a two-year process and the developer actually um. To their discovery, found the remnants of the old high school that burnt down was dumped there, and just to shorten this long story. It's, it, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection had to go in and whatever, and. So that land now is owned by the town. That property would be amazing to set cluster development to allow. Affordable and senior living in the same area, and maybe it ties into our little micro bus to downtown. Um, scenario, but there's, I think there's opportunity, and I can't think of many other places that. The town owns enough land to do this on, so I get really excited when I think of the housing production plan. And these um opportunities to start from scratch. On beautiful forested property that can really support, and it isn't that far from downtown. To have something that could support the both of those, the senior and the affordable housing and have it mixed. And not just, here's where all the people that are seniors live and that's it, no, have it like mixed community. With facilities and everything in there, so that's, that's. That's what I think of when I look at the housing production plan and dream a little bit as it combines with the master plan, okay, I'm done.
So, what um. What a, I don't know, and what would we need to do for Butler? Um. I mean, is that, is that another overlay to say? Um. We want to. uh in you know, you permit a certain certain height and a certain housing density um uh lot sizes um there to to get to exactly what what you said?
I would, I would think yes, I think um the thing with overlay districts that we have to be cognizant of is that you know, the underlying zoning for like the base district always applies. So if you want to incentivize some, if you want to, I think the thought with a lot of the thought with establishing an overlay district is that you want to incentivize people to sort of build or design something that that the town wants, right? And so how are you going to incentivize developers to build cottage cluster style homes? So that's where you can add in things like a density bonus um and um maybe allow for some sort of waivers or other um other flexibilities that are not allowed with the traditional zoning for the Butler Ave neighborhood. Um, so it um, I don't know if I I have to ask, I wonder if Bill Reno worked in Concord um at the time, but there's a great cottage cluster development in West Concord. Um he used to be the town engineer there and um and I've driven by it a couple of times um and I don't know if anybody has ever I don't know if anyone is unfamiliar with cottage cluster style developments, but it's um the way that they're concentrated is just it's really fascinating and you know, if you add enough like here in Wakefield, if we if within one development enough are built, you know, you have, you can have the units that are going to be accounted counted as affordable per our inclusionary zoning bylaws, but because of their housing profile, because they are smaller housing units. It's what we would characterize as naturally occurring affordable because they don't meet the dimensional standards of many of the single family homes that are developed nowadays.
All right, that's a great recommendation.
It's it's there's um I've heard of that mentioned before, but I haven't been there. Um, there's an interesting little area off of Cedar Street in Wakefield in the west side. If you, it's in the triangle of Gould and Albion. And if you go into Cedar Street there, there's a little court that goes in. And there's three in a triangular shape. There's three sets of row houses, like four and five houses in each row. It's it's very cool. Um, so we have precedent, it's been done in a few places. And that's one that's just close to my neighborhood. Um, and I don't know if you've been there before, but it's, it really works. It makes a tiny little courtyard community. It could use some landscaping and different things going on, but there's parking right in front, there's a little yards, there's there's, it's cute.
I think if um in terms of applying an overlay district, it might be beneficial to identify other parcels that are similar to Butler Ave, you know, sort of a virgin forested land. I'm I doubt there's much left, as is the case with most developed suburban communities in the greater Boston area. But um you know, at least you're not just singling out one, one parcel. Um, you can apply it to multiple parcels across town.
I know we want to be careful we're not spot zoning.
Spot zoning, right?
Yeah, I know.
I think the sort of the loophole, for lack of a better word, is you know, if you're, if you're getting ahead of the game, you know, if you want to encourage clustered cottage cluster development, you establish the overlay ahead of time. That way you allow for people to then propose a development that meets those standards as set forth in the overlay. I think spot zoning gets triggered when somebody has already come with a proposal and you don't have the zoning uh regulations to allow for it to happen. So then you go and change it. It's when there's already um when everybody's clearly aware that there is a planned development, there is something to be going on and something that is planned to go on and you change the zoning because of that. I think if you get ahead of the game far enough, then you know, um then it I don't think it would look like spot zoning and it's it's clearly, it's a recommendation that we're that we're basing this off of, a recommendation in the plan.
Yeah, I know.
I do want to just pause and and like Kevin, we've been having a decent amount of conversation and you haven't uh had a chance to participate. Is there were there any components of the housing production recommendations that I pulled out that seemed to 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 be of interest to you?
Yeah, I would agree with Theo and Bill, I like seven to nine. Um, I also wondered if two could be bundled in, especially with seven, they're kind of similar um in the the result that we're hoping for. Um, I I really like the the discussion about this potential use for the the Butler Ave plot of land. Does anyone know, Marissa, maybe you know, there's been work that had been going on over there? Is there, there's no plan that the town has for using that land for a specific purpose right now, is there?
I don't believe so. I think all that's going on right now is just remediation efforts.
Okay.
I believe that's.
Don't believe there, yeah, I don't believe there is any sort of housing plan.
So just, yeah, so I I want to just kind of drive to the 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 general without getting into individual lots or specific recommendations right now. I I think the reason why I had this highlighted is I I'd gone through and tried to kind of rec identify the different recommendations from the housing production plan. And I know we'd had this conversation about a remapping rezoning effort. Do we think that basically all the things we're talking about are, you know, whether it be adding an overlay or um you know, going and doing an audit of different lands that might encourage cottage style? Is that all kind of one in the same or are there specific things that we think, for lack of a term, should be put on a separate track? Because not to get to the punchline, but I anticipate that if we're going to do a rezoning effort, that's not a quick effort, right? Because we want to make sure that we have the right amount of time for development of a thoughtful plan and public engagement. And so that's that that's not a short thing. So was there anything that we think that we should extract out of that as a recommendation from the housing production plan? And segregate it so we can have it move along quicker? Or we think all of this is kind of bundled into one conversation?
So like uh looking at at two, seven and nine, I I could I I thought they were two separate things, to be to be entirely honest, because I I think I think um to Bill's uh earlier point, I think we've got tools in place to to um make some movement on these areas. Um, so like I I would say is the first, the first task to identify some nonconforming lots um uh in these in these various districts. And and then secondly would be to um come up with uh for for discussion purposes, some model form uh uh descriptions um. Uh, and then and then that that would then promote some discussion about uh future, future uses in in these in these corridors that would that are already identified um.
Theo, sorry, just to ask a question, and corridors meaning like the MBTA MBTA communities, okay?
Yeah.
When you, when you say two different things, one being a comprehensive look at the zoning map?
Correct. Yeah, so so I think the the crux of the question is, is that is there anything that we want to go to go faster? As it relates to a zoning amendment or something that we think is not appropriate in a larger conversation? That that we want to have as a separate series of conversations with the public? Or we think all the in in one bite is the appropriate approach? And Kevin, I've kind of been going back and forth on it. I I think the the advantage of separating the two is that you can potentially have a conversation that's focused on a specific idea or a specific approach that you could implement and hopefully have it streamlined and focus on uh you know, a more narrow or set of arguments as opposed to why that piece of zoning is better or should go into effect.
Right?
The the other other is, you know, do you just have it all be this omnibus? You know, series of comprehensive changes, so you run one process with the public instead of having zoning on efforts and zoning efforts. Sorry, Bill, I think you're about.
No, that's okay. Um, we did a lot of, this board did a lot of work back in twenty twenty one, twenty two. Um, we presented to town council, we had a lot of open meeting discussions. Um, it was, it was on the lake district, like how do we look at? It was part of working with Erin Kokinda and thinking about economic development and community and all that where what is it? And the studies that we did for Envision Wakefield and everything always pointed back to the lake is our most amazing resource. It attracts, it draws, it's community, um it's events, whatever might be happening. So there's so much that revolves around our lake that brings in outside communities, uh people from outside communities and internal. So we did like a lake zoning map, uh we looked at different districts like the limited business district and looked at like, how do we change the zoning requirements for these areas to um benefit from any type of well, adding businesses and residents in that area, but really putting a lake district together as a zoning district that helps development, but also keeps the lake intact to where the bill, the building happens so far away from our, whatever, we have different setbacks. Um, so that's, uh Jim, is that closer to what you're um thinking?
Um, uh so I I I'll give a good example, right? So where I was asking is I like number six, right? Allow rear hammerhead or mid block development, right? Where it says you're pervert, you're you're permitting as of right a rear lot. So you could have a lot on the that fronts fronts the roadway and then a one that is behind, right? So so kind of in in some respects, you have a subdivision where you're 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 frontage requirements are being relaxed, right? Or something like that, that's narrow focused targeted. Is that something that we are interested in hiving off from a larger conversation? Or a and I think as we've been kind of talking more and more, like I wouldn't, I don't think that like a lake, a separate lake district, like I'd had, he'd do in a map change and have a separate map change concurrent, that feels like it's confusing for for, you know, like a the what where the value add is versus, you know, having the public get that that those two processes crossed up candidly. But that that was kind of more my question as part of this conversation. If not, I think that's totally fine. And I think a lot of these recommendations are worthy of conversation and and have merit. And we'll just get wrapped in the overall map discussion we've been talking about.
Yeah, I I like um going after uh some specific items uh separate from a broader map discussion. So so that we get some wins. Um, I think uh I think identifying uh the the lots that are potential hammerheads uh would be a a really good start. Um, and I mean.
To be clear, when I say the hammerheads, I'm not talking about like, we're going out and doing a lot um audit, for lack of a better term, I'm just saying, this is something that you're you're denoting as like this is as of right in any place where two places. Like something where it's it's a global change, right? Because we're we're not, we're not sitting here and we're not going to go and redevelop a site, right? We're we're trying to set the ground rules of what's possible from a zoning perspective. So we're easing the regulatory burden or making something that is not allowable allowable. And so that's, that's, that's the the nature of the of the the effort, in my opinion. And again, if if others disagree, I'm more than happy to 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 think about it differently.
Okay, I guess I was thinking about it differently. So that that makes um uh I I guess again, to that point, I think, I think you got to do the don't you do the map second, the mapping second? Um, you do, you do these kinds of uh uh amendments to the zoning. Um, and then and then you map, you map them. Am I making sense? I don't, I'm not sure I am.
Um, I could bring you through a quick process from the couple of times I've been, I've experienced it while on the planning board and before. Um, usually there's some type of a petition from whether it's a group or a board. And that petition for a zoning bylaw amendment would be brought sometimes from the town council right to our board. We are the board that reviews and holds the open meetings. So we would hold a series of public forums to gather information, review current zoning bylaws. So everybody's on the same page, make sure all that information is up on our website and um and that type of stuff. So that takes a little bit of time. And then we would identify that process moving forward from these forums to figure out the next steps, meaning, okay, because of what we learned from the public and DPW and engineering and public safety and fire and 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 police and all that, we are um and other boards. We are recommending um and mending these bylaws, zoning bylaws with this message. And that's when we start to work with Tom Mullen, um town council, to make sure it's all there. And of course, Marissa, you're 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 orchestrating all of this, sorry. And and then um we would um obviously, it will include the property owners to review once those um amendments to the zoning are applied to a certain area or map. And then we have to notify and bring all those people in. And once that all goes through and happens, then we bring it to town meeting and it goes on to the uh warrant. So um I just wanted to run the board through like what I've experienced. So I I think that would be the process that we would do and it could be scaled down. It could also be scaled up. I don't know, Marissa, does that sound like a pretty good?
Yeah, yes, so I I think though what, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what you might have been getting at um and um this is contrary to what Theo said just said. I think, you know, if we're looking at a, we're looking at the map and then we're going to be looking at specific regulations within each zoning district, right? Because the idea is to reimagine our zoning. And I think it starts with the map. I think we want to look at a geographic picture of the town of Wakefield. I I think it starts with, this is just me, I I think it starts with identifying maybe our denser districts, right? Like our downtown, our Greenwood District, Albion Street, North Ave, like kind of start from a middle and then build outward, right? So like identifying a main street corridor and maybe some offshoots from there. And then working out toward the borders of town with Reading, Stonem, Melrose, Saugus. And reworking the zoning districts based on that. And then, once you have your base districts laid out, then we can think about different overlays that we might want to incorporate. Do we want to incorporate like a Lake Quanapawat overlay district? Do we want to incorporate a cottage cluster overlay district? And then you can get into the nitty gritty of maybe the specifics of some of those use regulations or dimensional regulations within those districts. I do think, Jim, to answer your question, I think it might make sense to band it all together. I feel like if you are gonna rework a map and and give some like really reinvent some of these zoning districts, I think new, maybe more flexible or progressive regulations should come out of um come out as a result of that. And um and and then to what Bill said, this is, this is a process that we would build correct through community engagement um with our residents, with our local business owners, with other town stakeholders, you know, local groups, non for profit groups, we have a Friends of Lake Quanapawat group. Um, we have our town council, we have other staff. Um, you know, each department or different departments might have their own opinions um about these proposed building changes.
Do you mind if I pause you? May maybe informative to to the board, let's take a step back from the the housing production plan I'm asking and maybe I can outline broad brushes of what we were talking about for like the the map over or the the overall map rezoning and kind of um and I know that I just you it to the board uh earlier today, so that people haven't had a chance to take a look at it. Um, conceptually, right? What? So I'll take a step back. We've done all these different studies. We did the bylaw recodification. We haven't really done any implementation of the zoning recommendations from these different studies to address any of the myriad of issues from housing that we have. Whether that be affordability, availability of housing, suitability based on the 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 mix of we have for residents versus available housing stock. So what I started trying to figure out. So what I started trying to figure out is we, and we've talked about, our map looks like it hasn't been updated in forty years. Um, a, and there's, there's a bunch of quirks in there that are just dimensionally, don't, don't make sense and probably need to get cleaned up on the merits regardless, right? So I put together kind of a conceptual concept of having a multi-month phase when you have alignment where we are trying to identify what committee or what board or who are we talking to? Start pushing that process along. Start coming up with a framework, hold whatever survey, additional surveys above and beyond what we already have in Wakefield twenty thirty for the housing production plan. Create some of the options as it relates to different elements within the proposed zoning map overlay. And where, where that would be is identifying corridors, we want development to occur. Where do we wanna cite businesses? Where do we wanna make sure that we're not spot zoning, limited business for existing businesses? But if it's good in, uh, uh, for one section of the corridor, is there a corridor that we wanna have more limited businesses on? Where is it appropriate to have large lot, single family? Where is appropriate to have single family with more modest lots? All those types of conversations, right? Then to go in and have a series of drafting hearings and then going out and having the public education slash engagement and making any adjustments you may need, right? So I kind of arbitrarily, right? Not saying that we're gonna be starting this process in a couple of weeks, but just to try to frame out, what does that look like? And kind of came up with a, you know, a roughly, you know, eighteen, twenty-ish month process. Not saying it's final, but the, the thought is that, starting with the beginning of the process through the end of it, we would potentially redevelop. Whether we keep our existing classifications of land use regulation and just change the extent of the maps. Or we do something more substantial. I, I'm not gonna be the one who says one way or the other at the beginning, right? But just trying to talk about developing a process, that's conceptually what I had come up with. And then with each of those sections, I pushed to the board, the, 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 a more um, comprehensive series of, of activities, right? Where we're talking about, you know, uh, the, the exa, the exact components that we're gonna be looking at doing, right? So that's, that's kind of the general feedback I wanted to start trying to, to drive. And the reason why I brought the housing production plan up before is cause as I just showed you, right? I think that that's a twenty month process. Was there anything on our zoning maps right now that we thought we could get ready for like spring next year that anyone was raising their hand saying? I'm motivated that there's this particular element of our existing zoning, I'd like to have changed before we do a more comprehensive look at it. Is that helpful in terms of the, the question I'm trying to pose? As I've been talking, I've become, become more convinced that it just wants to be one thing. But if others disagree, then I, I'm more than happy to hear. If there's anything that one wants, someone wants to pound the table and say, I wanna accelerate X, Y, or Z.
Well, I, I think I agree with you. I think it makes sense to do it all together, especially when presented that way where, you know, the alignment, the scoping inputs is another word that comes to mind during that stage of this. The housing production plan is a major part of that. So is envision three sixty, some of these other things where surveys were already done. So for that, like some of those inputs are already there for what the town wants to see. I think it's just kind of getting more information about how that could be done and getting different thoughts from boards and, and residents and other entities and individuals. But I, I think it does make sense to do it all together.
Good question, Jim, from your board meeting, um, from your experience with the, the recent meeting with all the boards present? Is that the, what, what's it called?
The tri-board meeting, the tri-chair meeting?
Is that what it's called? Cause I don't wanna mix it up with what the town council does with the other surrounding towns.
You're talking, you're talking about with the um, when, when I met with ZBAs and the
What, did anything, any conversations out of those meetings trigger a direction for you?
Not particularly, basically they just said, if, so when I mentioned, hey, we're interested in potentially looking at the maps. Everyone kind of stood up in their chair and said, that's very interesting. Yeah, we would like to be aware of what's going on and we'd like to be potentially part of it. Um, there was no specific like pounding the table, I want X, Y, or Z change. Um, there were, I think anecdotally, there, there may have been some desire from the ZBA to potentially look at. Um, how could they make it so some of the findings specifically that are a very big component of their workload, but are not a big value add and are potentially owners on building owners? Um, that was something they were interested in. So I think that might be call for like some grandfathering type of language or dimensional use tables. I'm not sure, and I'm, that was only one member of their board, so that may be not a consensus view. But um, there wasn't something that a specific like, we want you to change this right now. Um, I, I noticed J- John uh, Chrisley uh, raised your hand. I'm more than happy to, to take comments from other members of the, the public uh, related to this topic.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you, uh, thanks for the time, Jim. Um, and uh, you know, I've had an interest in the housing production plan. Um, since it's, since I first heard of it about a year and a half ago. Um, I think some of the recommendations you've discussed are, are very interesting, like the cottage style housing. Um, I, only because I ride the train with Theo, I've bent his ear a couple of times about a couple of ideas I have about universal design housing that would fit into one of those recommendations. You know, one particular type of housing for um, you know, senior citizens and the disabled. Um, and uh, you know, I've shared with Theo a couple of uh, a couple of resources I have. I used to, I worked with a guy who's a universal design um, architect. Um, guy that I know from uh, my previous agency work. Um, so just wanted to put it out there that I'm interested in following the HPP and the recommendations coming out of here. Um, and happy to uh, work with the planning board on, you know, from a town council perspective on supporting this, this larger effort.
And, and John, universal housing design, is, is that the type of design where there's a series of all called pre-dis, pre, pre-approved designs that are developed by municipality that you, if you're a developer, you can go just grab one of those designs off the shelf and get a building permit by right essentially?
No, that's not, actually that's not my understanding. My understanding is universal design is um, uh, typically like all of the main uh, functions of a house, like the kitchen, the bathrooms, the bedroom, you've got at least all of those on the first floor. Um, so that anybody with uh, you know, a physical disability um, can access all of those functions of the house um, on basically one floor. And you know, sometimes they have a second floor, obviously for, for people of, you know, different types of families that would, would occupy these facilities. Um, I heard about it a number of years ago and thought it was very interesting because my, my mother was becoming disabled at the time. And so I, I started learning just how difficult it is getting in and out of a whole variety of buildings. Um, so that's, you know, one interest of mine too. And um, Bill Balding, uh, Bill, you know, I've actually, uh, I emailed um, Dee Casey and Bill Renaud a couple of weeks ago. Um, we have an outdated list of complete streets uh, on our complete streets plan. Um, so um, I just wanted to bring that up and say, you know, I, I kind of pinged Dee and Bill and said, you know, we should undertake an effort to come up with a more extensive complete streets network in town and, you know, advance that a little further too. So that might have a little bit of an overlay with uh, some of the, the housing and uh, development issues that you're, that you're discussing here tonight. So just wanted to put that out there and um, you know, I'm happy to, obviously you're talking a whole different language that uh, I'm not a professional in, but uh, it's very interesting, some of the recommendations you've already covered.
Yeah, no, absolutely. No, thank you, thank you. That's, that's an interesting concept. I definitely would, would be interested to learn more. Um, okay, so the, so come up with this plan, obviously other members of the board, um, feel free to take a look at the, the kind of conceptual how we're thinking of potentially building it out. The other major component of this is, is this something that when I had met with the town, the new town administrator, uh, Dee Casey, she's, she said, hey, is this something that you guys would be interested in, in trying to engage a consultant, you know, someone who does rezoning map as a consultant to help facilitate this process? And, and Marissa, I don't know if you were able to scratch at that anymore, if there's any researcher or, or resources that you're available or that you're, sorry, you're aware of. That would be something that we could look at, but i- is that something that the board is interested in learning more on in terms of getting a, a resource to help provide facilitation of this conversation? So uh, Marissa, is, is that something you're aware of in terms of those types of people who could be part of that process?
Yeah, absolutely. I am actually just had a conversation with the town planner in Winchester yesterday. Um, in my research, I came across a lot of lands, like court, a lot of corridor study plans, a lot of main street downtown business plans. But I was, you know, a plan is a plan. I was looking for the actual finished product, which is the zoning bylaw. And Winchester was one of um, the peer communities that I came across. It actually um, produced a bylaw that was adopted in November of last year. There, it's called the North Main Street Corridor um, Overlay District. And I was on the phone yesterday with Taylor Herman, the planner over there. And he had a great experience working with Michael Wang, um, who is their consultant. He said, for what it's worth, I am actively reaching out to him about another project that we have going on. Um, or that we might have coming down the pipeline. We are like more than, we are so more than willing to work with him again. He was a great resource. Um, and then uh, Reading is working with him right now for the redesign of Walker's Brook Drive. Um, so he came highly recommended. I'll continue to do some research just so we have a few different names out there. Um, but uh, but like I said, Winchester was the only community that actually had a zoning bylaw that was produced. So I will forward that to all of you if you guys wanna take a look through it. Um, and you know, the, the bylaw is a result of um, a, a, a long, I think they all in all, their process was like five years, but that's because it started right before COVID. It started in twenty nineteen and then went on pause for um, for quite a while. And I think it picked back up in twenty twenty-two. Um, so, so I guess really it was like two and a half years um, when all, when all is said and done. Um, excuse me, um, and, and again, the bylaw was a result of community engagement sessions, working sessions with the planning board. Um, and this consultant, Michael Wang, worked with Taylor to um, you know, flesh out that bylaw together. But the, it, it was a response to the public input. Um, and then it was further fleshed out with, you know, legal counsel um, before it was finally brought to town meeting. Um, I, I'll say this personally, I can't foresee this process happening without a consultant. Um, that's what they're there for. Uh, it would be, I think it extremely arduous load to take on um, as, as municipal staff. Um, it would just, it would be great to have that expertise um, uh, with somebody who has experience in leading these sessions in um, in drafting the bylaw. Uh, and, and also, this is going to be a very um, design-based concept too. And uh, and consultants have that, have that expertise and knowledge as well. Um, you know, and they're, they're able to really provide that sort of visioning aspect in um, in these community engagement sessions, so that, that residents do have a, like a clearer picture of what these zoning bylaws or how this new zoning reform could actually look when it is put into practice. So um, I, I'm very pro consultant. Um, but the, the way the relationship with, you know, Mr. Wang was described to me by Taylor in Winchester was that, you know, it's not a consultant that does everything. It is a consultant that works with the town, that works with the planner, that works with the planning board, that works with the residents. They are there, they are there to help, not take the lead, not take the sole lead on everything, so.
So thank you for that. Have any members of the board have any other thoughts?
Yeah, no, I, I, I would, uh, yeah, I'm coming around to the, the, start with the map. And, and I think um, as the, as Jim, as you've proposed and the others have sort of uh, echoed. Um, I think some of my, my more short-term wins maybe are, are more appropriate for the housing trust. Um, the um, no, I, I, I like it. And I mean, uh, what, what you've got in front of us is, is a really, I think, uh, a good, a good thought document to, to get, to get us going. And you're, you're in that twenty twenty-three, twenty-five uh, two and a half year timeline, so. Yeah, um, I'd love to be a foot soldier for you.
Uh, Bill?
Yeah, I, well, first of all, I appreciate this, Jim, because all the boards and committees, we need a direction. We need a, I think we do much better as a group when we collaborate with other boards, with other, um, as Marissa was saying, like different company of business owners and, and groups and all that. So I think this is great that we're talking about it now. It would be really cool if each December, we did something like this, almost like an annual, hey, what's the bigger picture? What are we trying to do in the short term and the long term? What are we trying to accomplish? I, I also, um, something that I wanted to bring up because I don't know if it's happened in a while. Um, we used to do updates to town council and I can't remember if or why those stopped. But we would present at a town council meeting and take like ten minutes or so and present and share what our board did over the last year. So it's kind of like the annual report, but it's a presentation to the town council. Um, so there's some back and forth and some good conversations. But it really, it's like, well, here's how many A and Rs we did. Here's how, how many definitive subdivisions we did. And here's other zoning and other, you know, MBTA communities and all that stuff. So I was wondering if that's something that whether it's required or not by town council, the current town council, hi John? Um, if that's something we just do on our own?
I think it would be interesting for the town council to hear about your larger, you know, conceptualized plan for bringing together these different efforts. I mean, that would be, I would be very interested in that.
Yeah, a, a, and candidly, we, we have not, we have made a conscious choice not to push a comprehensive review of all these elements because we had the MBT Communities Act, which was the focus. And then the recodification, while we were not intimately involved in, we did not think it made a ton of sense for us to start a rezoning process while that was running as well as the housing production plan, which wrapped up in the, the fall and now.
Sure.
Maybe there's some debate whether or not we're gonna wait for the master plan based on the, the delays that that project has experienced. But I think we've gotten enough documentation that that's, and that's why I wanna go from plans into a process. A, a, and not saying I'm gonna, I know what the end of the process is. I think this is more about, I call it the talking about, talking about phase, where we wanna talk about how we wanna facilitate a conversation so that we can, can lay out the, the, the path and hopefully walk down the path. Adjust as needed, but at least we have a, uh, some guardrails on how to, how to develop a plan.
Sure. Well, it's, it's been really interesting. I, I apologize, I've gotta run, my, my college daughter has been calling me for the past twenty minutes, so I gotta go. I gotta go take a phone call, but thanks everyone. And I'm, uh, I'll be looking to become a little more regular in some of these discussions. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks, John.
So, thank you. So with that, with that being said, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to kind of walk through kind of the conceptual, the, the conceptual phases of this and get feedback. Marissa took a look at this and, and basically told me I should take some of these durations and make them longer already. Um, based on just previous experience, but I'd love to just kind of go through and get feedback from other members of the board and tell me if you think that I'm trying to craft a plan that makes sense or if it, it, it needs adjustment. So conceptually, right, from, from overall broad brush, my thought is that this is a, you know, where we're trying to, we're trying to articulate that we, this is a plan that we're going from a series of visioning documents. Wakefield twenty thirty, housing production, et cetera, to an action to implementation, right? And this isn't just some new thing that the planning board is coming up or is being dictated by the state. This is something that we're trying to take feedback and express preferences from townsfolk via surveys and volunteer groups and actually take what they've said and don't let it just collect us on the shelf. So in order to do that, the thought is that we want to create this aligning, alignment and scoping phase where we're trying to come up with how we're actually structuring the process. Then go into framework development where we're actually doing, I'll, I'll call it the, the ten thousand foot view type of concepts. Where do I want density? Where do I not want density? What are the, the levels of density we want? Where do we want business? Where do we not want business? Then you're going into a dra- a drafting phase where you're, you're getting more of the, the technical, like Tom Mullen from town council, being more involved in validating and like people like the bylaw review committee, those types of efforts, right? Where you have the more, uh, legalistic drafting of like le- legal language associated with everything. And then you're going into the phase where you're, you're, I'll call it the sell mode. Hey, this is what we came up with. Here's why we think it's great. Why, here's why you should vote it in the town meeting that's going to come up. So that's kind of the, the broad brush, you know? We can probably ignore these, these, these anticipated timeframes right now because they're, they're probably not realistic. Especially since we're probably going to have to slide when I just put as a generic baseline of Jan one of next year. Um, but if we pivot to what does that look like at, at the more actionable level? For the phase, the first phase where you're trying to get the, the everything figured out as it relates to how we're going to go through the next couple of phases, you're talking about who are the actual members of the different committees? Who's going to be sitting on the committees for the district framework? What are some of the, the activities you want to be doing? And how do, how do you actually build out the, 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 the team, for lack of a better term? And what is the scope or we're actually even looking at? So, I know I just said a lot of words, so I want to just pause and see if anyone thinks that anything I just articulated doesn't make sense, or if there's any adjustments that you think make a lot of sense. And I'll also pause before I do that. All of this is just totally like my, I, I went and tried to come up with a rough framework for reference. The members of planning board have only had twelve hours to look at it. I'm sure there's getting more thoughtful, thoughtful and considered opportunities for people to look at, and then we could talk about in a more meaningful manner.
Um, I'd uh, I'm, I'm highly positive. Um, I, I think it's, I think it, it's a good uh, section phrasing or, you know, uh, putting things into blocks. Um. The, oh, sorry, I gotta plug in my computer. Um, so I will, I'll leave it, I'll leave it there for the moment.
Okay. Bill, look like you unmuted?
Yeah, I think it's, it's good to have this framework just to understand, um, and I, I think, I mean, yeah, this is our first meeting talking about what to talk about. So I think once we narrow down, so I, Jim, I, I kind of feel like we have some homework. And it's, it's kicking off, well, finishing this year, kicking off our first meeting. I would like to suggest that we have some space on the agenda for, um, some topics, but between now and then, I feel like there's a homework assignment. And I feel like we all owe you with the work that you've done a list of what we think could be, um, on the list for the alignment scoping and, you know, that phase one, phase two stuff. So I think using this document that you've provided, each of us should come up with a few scenarios of what we think we can move forward with. And I think if it's, it's more like pre-work, more than homework, maybe that in our first meeting in January that, um, we get to share that.
So in that case, you, what you, I think what you're hearing is saying is you, you think it's probably worth, not worth going through and grinding through a, a whole, this whole document right now. But to give your, your team or sorry, the rest of the board the opportunity to look at it more deeply and then we can kind of come together.
I think so because it looks like you put some time into this, whether it's you know, part of your professional side or whatever you're working with here. There's a lot of content that I am definitely not going to absorb this evening. But if I did have some time to look at it with like a little deadline saying, hey, by the end of December, before our next meeting, that you chair would like to receive from each of the members of the board our thoughts on this document and possibly some options of what you think we should focus on.
I think that, that sounds, that sounds good to me, honestly. Um, if, unless the, or Kevin, you disagree.
No, I, that makes a lot of sense. I, I like what you have here, but I do think sitting on it and absorbing it over the next couple of weeks uh, would be good to see what each of us comes up with that maybe builds this up more or potential changes that pop to someone's mind.
Yeah, a- and I do want to state, I, I am not precious about this at all. If people think that I'm completely off base and telling me that we need to make major revisions, I'm not opposed to that at all. I was just trying to take a first pass to give it. We got to start somewhere, right? So that, that's, you know, if, if people feel like that there's a, a bunch of red ink that needs to go on this, don't hold back, you know, I, I, I'm more interested in us actually starting and, and finding a way to craft a process that we feel good about then, than anything else.
I agree, and um, I think what I'd like to do is to take this document and go through the master plan again to refresh my memory with all the good content that came from that as well as the housing production plan and a few other notes and different things that I have in my planning board folder, but I mean, the, back to that Lake District, it started because of a conversation with friends of Lake Quanapawit and that they were interested in. And it happened at, I think, one of the, um, you know, town days on the lake. Coming by the booth type of thing. And it was like, oh, this is great, but where it went was, well, with the development at the top of the lake, it it pretty much went away. So I think we have to be careful about what we choose for our efforts, just to make sure that it, it, we can get some momentum behind it. So I think as we each member reviews the phases and thinks about how they want to approach it, I, I would just suggest that there's a lot of other documents out there that you could review from the envisioned Wakefield all the way up to the master plan and more that I think will help with background understanding, better, better choices.
Procedurally speaking, uh, because our next meeting is January thirteenth, right? Um, if you guys, um, if you want, I would say email your thoughts individually to Jim and me, like to Jim, CC me. And then that way we don't want any violation of O and L. Um, and then I can compile everybody's slots together in a document. That way I can like look at what each of you have to say, see if there are any overarching themes. If you guys have, if you you know, share any common priorities, I can compile that. And, um, if you send it to me the sixth, which is the Tuesday before the meeting, maybe by Friday, I can have something put together and then send it to you guys so that you can look good over the weekend. And then we have it as our discussion point for the meeting on thirteenth.
Excellent. And I think we should do this every December.
Really? You know, I, it's not a bad suggestion. I, I think the, the big thing in my mind is this, this one, because I, I think that this is again, depending on how we want to manage it, i- i- if we, especially we're going to go get a consultant and spend dollars. That we want to make sure we get this right and teed up in a, in a good spot. Um, okay. Uh, any other thing, uh, else on either item number four or five, housing production plan or, and that rezoning process?
I'm adding it to my Outlook calendar now.
And I'll, I'll send an email out tomorrow or Thursday as well, because Kristen's not here, so we have to loop her in on this too.
Yep. Yep, absolutely. Um, okay. So then that case, I will proceed to item number six, subdivision and A and R rules and regs. So this one is a little bit of a uh, Marissa catching you up and also reminding the board. Um, so I have gone through my records. I believe that we have in a public hearing approved the update of our subdivision rules and records, sorry, rules and regulations rather in a, the, the March, I think it's the March, uh, twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five meeting. However, our E code does not look like it reflects that. Um, so I think that that is an important thing in my perspective to get that updated because we adopted that some time ago and I'm sure it's probably due staff turnover and just, I didn't, going back and look at it. Um, because, you know, I think Theo mentioned, you know, we want to make sure we're as proactive as possible about making the subdivision process as clean as possible. Um, and there was a lot of effort to try to do that and in that, um. That's one thing I wanted to highlight. Um, so Marissa, and maybe we can connect offline, talk about the subdivision rules and regs and if there's anything else in there. Um, and thank you, Theo, for reminding me by asking the applicant, if there's anything that we could do to make it more efficient the last time we talked to them. So it made me want to just go back and look to see if there's anything else. And then I realized the E code wasn't actually what we had.
That's a great catch.
Talked about previously. Um, but I wasn't sure if there was any appetite. We look at the subdivision from the planning board. Or once we get the E code up, we want to see a subdivision go through its full paces before we re- relook at it. I recall it was a lengthy process to get that consensus previously.
Yeah, I, um, I, I, yeah, um, I'm just going to say yes again to everything. Um, the I think we had, we have a really good example of, uh, just based on one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem, so.
Because I think one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem was basically you, or not basically, was utilizing the previous rules and regs, not the new ones that were prom- quote, quote, should have been promulgated.
Yeah.
So, I think maybe, maybe we, maybe I think we promulgate the, the ones that we did, we talked about back in March. See what happens next time we get a, a rules, a subdivision and then based on the experience, then we can look at it at that point. Is that what I'm soft consensus on?
I think that makes sense since we haven't really with the new ones.
Yeah. And then the other thing that triggered that hole, rabbit hole I fell into is we had talked about, I don't think we ever drew it to resolution, A and R rules and regulations. Um. We had talked about, there were some relatively minor uh, markups that Matt Lowry had made related to the A and R and those rules and regulations. And, uh, specifically, and I'll pull up right now, uh, specifically related to some language on, um, meaning so he's become they's, but maybe more gender neutral, but I think the bigger one is uh, making sure that the number of printed copies was not, I, I, I think it was like, I think it's like six or seven of them right now and we don't necessarily always get PDFs. So making that change, which I strongly advocate for, I'm sure all the members of the board do as well. Um, and that's more or less, unless I missed the boat, you know, there is a, um, the physical plan should be compared to the PDF to make sure that there wasn't a change, you know, if we're going to be making a, a vote at a virtual meeting. But does, does anyone else have any recollection? Did we ever actually pick this back up? Because I couldn't, I looked through my records and I couldn't find it, but I wasn't sure. And if we didn't, then are people okay with me putting it on the agenda to, to set a public meeting, talk about it and then potentially vote on it in the early part of the year?
I'm just looking through my notes. I thought it was somewhere like around. I don't know. I thought it was like, exactly like a year ago.
That, so this one that I've got is dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Oh.
It's from Matt Lowry.
Oh, that, okay.
Because I remember we talked about it and then I thought that we put it down because we were going to pick up the subdivision and then maybe we just lost sight of it because the subdivision dragged out as a process, but I, I don't recall if we ever picked it back up and I don't have record of anything else. So if I missed it, shame on me.
It's possible. I know Matt had me chasing some things around too. I have like from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one and the A and R handbook, which was updated, I think in twenty twenty from the state. Um, we're using, I think Evangelista Way as one of the examples. Um, so I do have a little bit of stuff. I'm not sure what you have, but, um.
Yeah.
We're looking for examples of like what is the format that we prefer? Like what does it contain? Not just like this, we were receiving them without, um, the owner of record information, we're like.
So are you referring to the checklist? Because that's a separate document, I think.
No, it was like, it was more like here's an A and R plan that we were presenting as. Right. But we were using that as an example. And I think I, I have another folder somewhere with examples from a couple of other towns on what they do for their, um, um, A and R requirements.
Yeah, I just, I just have the checklist, um.
Kevin, does this, does any of this ring any bell to you or is this all predate?
The checklist does. This might, what you have on the screen now, this might predate me.
Okay. Because what I looked, I looked at the E code and it did not appear as if it was updated to this. So, i- if, if Bill and Theo, if you don't have record of this, then I would advocate, we should just set a public hearing. Hold the public hearing, take a vote on it and, and promulgate this, um, i- in the new year.
That's, that sounds great. Um. I see it on the, the August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two agenda. Yeah, all right.
Okay, well. I won't, I won't beat a dead horse. So I'm assuming no one, no one will object if I put in the next meeting, meeting to set a public hearing on this.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I was like, I was like a blast from the past when you said, change your subdivision rules and regs. I was like, wait a second. Um, so, uh, so in that case, Susan, can we put on the, the January thirteenth meeting to set rules and regs? Uh, public hearing as one of the agenda items then? Okay. Um, so in that case, I'll move on to item number seven, items not anticipated by the chair. Does anyone have anything else?
I, I have something quick. Um, I noticed in the meeting notes and Susan, please correct me if I'm wrong. Um, there's two things happening with the meeting notes. I'm trying to pull it up to see. We have maybe the meeting notes and agenda under the notes part. There's, um, the first item is planning board meeting material will be posted to the planning board page on the town of Wakefield's website. So the link does work, but when you go to it, it's just not updated. So I'm wondering as a board, should we? Like, how does this happen? And Marissa, maybe this is more of something that's in, working in, in the, in the, in the development of the newer website. But if I go to meeting materials, uh, twenty twenty-five, it stops in August. Twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, but on the left where there's meeting materials, um, there's nothing listed, like you can't like if I go to the August twenty-six meeting, there's some information there, but there's nothing for like the latest document. So if somebody was preparing for the meeting, meeting and a butter, how do they find that info for like Salem Street or other projects?
So like what Brian sent out late yesterday?
Yeah.
So should that have gone on to the meeting material tab, any of that?
I don't know if we're, if we're going to add that to our agenda where it's a link to our site and the last link of, um, hyperlink on there is August. I feel like, ugh, that's such a dead end.
Oh, right. I, I never know what to do and I don't have access to add anything to that. And I'm not sure if Marissa does or if Marissa, you would have to go through Sherry to get that. if Marissa, you would have to go through Sherry to get that. I'm, I'm not
I can, um, tell you what we did in Swambsk, um, but this is something we, I don't think we can yet do in Wakefield because we haven't upgraded to Microsoft three, six, five. We have Outlook as a platform, but we don't have the whole Microsoft kit and Google. Um, but we used OneDrive a lot in Swambsk. So whenever there was an application for a subdivision, for a site plan review, for any zoning petition, we uploaded it to a shared drive. And whenever the item was highlighted or listed in the agenda, I would highlight the address, create a hyperlink, so that when you clicked on the address, it brought up that folder with all of the materials in there from, and I, you know, I had it organized chronologically, so the date of the app, like the date on there, from, from oldest to most recent. And then that way, all I have to do is, you know, in the example of today, when Attorney McGrath submitted the, um, the, the draft, or what is it, the meeting, the timestamp for meeting extension or something like that. Um, all I have to do is just drag that right into the drive and then it, that's, that's it, you know? Um, even, I don't have to, we don't have that yet. And every time I talk to IT, I get the same answer, which is soon. Um, so
Sherry does something with her meeting materials. Sherry, Sherry has stuff for her meeting materials that go right on. You just click on the meeting material tab on her agenda and it goes right to it. She's got a string of things, so I don't know how that happens.
Town Council, right?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, the zoning board of appeals is a similar way where they use that gray sidebar on the left, the charcoal gray. They put like two, um, Quanapower Parkway projects, and then you even click on that and it gives you a whole list of all the plans. And those plans are actually super outdated. They're from twenty twenty two. So, uh, this past week on the Wakefield Facebook page, community page, which I do browse and sometimes interact, it's, um, they were looking for, someone was looking for, um, the latest update on the plans, where can I find them? And yeah, you go to the zoning, it's, you can't find them. You can't find updated plans and it's
Right.
I think it's a little embarrassing, honestly. I feel like, and Marissa, this isn't obviously on you, you, you still got that whole new I'm new here, but I, I, it takes a while, I think, to change something like this. And I feel that we just went through a complete brand change on our website, that that was like the moment that it was going to happen.
Yeah. I mean, if we get, if we get my, like, I, I'll screenshot really quickly. I can show you what it looked like in, um, in Swambsk, um, this is their board and committee page. And so if I go to like zoning board of appeals and, um, I'll go back to what was the last agenda that I would have done, um, the July one, I guess, um, July twenty second, click on the agenda. And so here are all the material links to each petition that's listed, right? So three to five Cedar Hill Terrace, fifty three Justin Street, um, three seventy one Paradise Road. Uh, this was, I'm trying to think if there was like a big one. Um, I guess three seventy one Paradise, that was a sign thing, uh, or thirty Pittman Road. Oh, this one, we'll do this one. Click on it. It opens up OneDrive.
Yes, yeah.
And this was a one and done hearing. So, but you have everything there. So you have the application, you have the architecturals, you have the plot plan. Let's say in the event that like the architecturals needed to be changed because they didn't meet the dimensional requirements or the plot plan. If the surveyor submitted a new plot plan, like let's say he emailed it to me the day of the meeting. All I would do is take it from my email, drag it into OneDrive. I would update it with that date. I would say twenty twenty five dot oh seven dot twenty two plot plan. So that way you know it was the updated version. And all you would, and then it would instantly be there. Once you drag and drop, you know, that's how a shared drive works. It's all, it's, it's immediately there for everybody to see. So this was the easiest way for us to keep updated with all materials, because it was just it was a one and done type update, just drag and drop. And it made it easy for me. So the second a new material comes in, it was like, oh, let me open the folder in the drive and just pop it in. And, and I don't have to change the link on the meeting agenda. You would click on the link, and if you clicked on the link right before the meeting, you would see the new plot plan that would be in there, you know? So if, um, hopefully we can get upgraded to three sixty five, and then I can do that exact same thing. Susan can do that exact same thing and and then we would be able to do it ourselves. We wouldn't have to go through anybody else. Um, I know, I know myself and a bunch of colleagues are very anxious or eager to have Microsoft three, six, five.
But I think now we still have to go through Sherry, so I guess we can find out from her. How to get that updated.
And so, I mean, that just means giving her a big PDF, right? And then she separately loads it up to the page.
Yeah, like if, if we wanted, for example, that copy of the timestamped extension notice to get on the meeting materials before today's meeting, we would have to send it over to Sherry, or, you know, we would have to instruct like Attorney McGrath to CC Sherry so that she could get it up on the website. But then that's also pending the other, the whole myriad of responsibilities that she also has that fall under her umbrella, you know, there's no at least like if we had the control, we would know, like Susan or myself, we would know that, you know, it would just be an instantaneous thing. So having to go through somebody else to do it leaves us with that lack of control, so which is unfortunate.
Yeah, thanks for the explanation and the tour. I think, um, this board suffers like a lot of the boards from public participation, and I think that's one of the roadblocks is if you go to the website to look for to prepare, to understand what's going on, it's a dead end, and it's just, okay, why bother? So I, I think it could help. So if, I don't know, I don't think there's anything we can do until the town updates. I guess it's maybe if we all send emails to D.
Yeah, say three, six, five, we want Microsoft three, six, five.
Well, it was kind of like a running joke. I, like, once a month I would send an email to, um, our former town administrator and say, hey, what about that hybrid, um, conference room with, so we can have in-person and hybrid, or in-person and remote meetings? Yeah.
So
Yeah.
Before the, the upgrade to Microsoft three, six, five, could there just be an additional person, whether it's Susan or Marissa, one of you that gets access so that you could do it to our page and it doesn't have to go through Sherry?
I can certainly ask, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can certainly ask.
That might be easier in the, in the short term before we have the upgrade.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I had, I, I had website access to when, um, in Swambsk, so I was able to um, make any changes as necessary to the planning zoning board pages.
Okay, uh, any other items not anticipated? Okay, in that case, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Bill or Kevin, seconded by Theo, we'll call vote, Bill?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And yes, myself. Hey, guys, have a great night.